Florida, thank you tonight for the beautiful spring behavior you had performed for all the townships and people in it. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this country. And I pray you give us guidance tonight as we run the business of a township. Please stand by my name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. Trying to make this short and sweet. It won't happen, but hey, we're saying. Okay. You have a chance to look over the agenda? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I have motion.
Support.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Through both the minutes, you've had a chance to look over the minutes from three eleven twenty four. Do you have any corrections? Changes?
Not that I didn't notify everybody of the one that we did not provide meals or to contact anyone to you.
Okay. Is that the only thing?
Yeah, that's the only thing.
And that's fixed?
Yep.
Take a motion to accept the minutes of three eleven twenty four.
I have motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
In support, if you call in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Special meeting of three twenty two. The road commission projects. Am I going too fast? I'm just asking, if I'm going fast, tell me, I'll slow down. Uh, special meeting three twenty two twenty four was the special meeting for county road commission projects. Have a chance to look it over? Any corrections? Changes? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I have motion. I'll second.
Motion made, supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Special meeting. Three twenty five, twenty twenty four. Special meeting on twenty four twenty five budget. Have a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Any que- any questions of, uh, changes?
No.
Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I have motion. I'll second.
Motion made, supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. County Commissioner Brandon.
Thank you, supervisor. Beautiful, uh, spring day, it's been a week, you all. A few updates from the, the county, a couple things from our last meeting. Uh, because we, tomorrow we will have our first meeting of the month, our last meeting of March. Uh, we did receive a report from our county drain commissioner. Uh, now several lakes within the county that have, uh, both court ordered, court set lake levels on them. And also some form of an containment structure, a dam that works at maintenance of those levels. And, uh, those lakes were Lake Pleasant, Mary Lake, Somerset, and Lake Lee Anne. Um, there is some corrections that need to be made to a couple of the lake levels. Uh, go to Lake Somerset and Lake Lee Anne, they evidently were never set correctly. The survey data was evidently incorrect. And, uh, so those will need to go back to circuit court and reset them. And then also the dams on those lakes, they, they need some repairs. And so because there is a lake level assessment district, if the drain commissioner wants to spend more than ten thousand dollars for lake level improvements, uh, that has a lake level assessment. They have to come before the board of commissioners and create a check and balance in the office of drain commissioner and the legislative body of the county. And so then we have to do those by any means, or last meeting, we did pass those five, uh, resolutions that authorize the drain commissioner to, to do the work on those structures. Uh, they are required every three years by state law, the DQ does require the dam to be inspected. Uh, when they are, uh, becoming in less than, than great condition, then, uh, work needs to be done on them. So, uh, basically that, that will authorize the, the, the work to be done on those. We also did authorize replacing a microwave link between the Woodbridge Public Safety Communication Tower and Waldron Tower. Uh, Woodbridge is actually a physical tower at the Woodbridge Township Fire Department. Uh, it's a hundred and ninety some feet high, just under two hundred, so it doesn't ever have a flashy flashy light on the top of it. And then the Waldron Tower is actually the water tower. So, uh, that's where the communication, and that microwave link has failed several times, uh, in previous months. And we were hoping that we could keep it up and, and process is moving towards an eight hundred megahertz system, perhaps at least keep that functional. However, it failed to the point where we were unable to tone out fire department for either fire or medical down in Waldron. And so consequently, we did replace that to the tune of a little over twenty thousand dollars. Uh, tomorrow, we will be hearing a couple of reports, one will be from, uh, Nick Wilo, the county equalization director. Uh, those boards of review information that, uh, all the townships conducted back in March, that flows up to the equalization director of the county. And, uh, he does his magic with that. And then he will be presenting that report tomorrow to the board of commissioners. Uh, the expectation, uh, from what we were hearing from Nick is, is that we will anticipate property taxes again this year. Uh, we will hit that heavily cap of five percent. They actually, uh, property values went up greater than that, but we are limited constitutionally with a five percent cap. So, uh, you can anticipate that probably you will see a, a five percent increase in your property taxes if you've made no changes to that property. Um, also, we will be receiving our annual report from our county medical examiner. Uh, we actually share our medical examiner with Jackson and Lenaway Counties, Dr. Mano. And, uh, I did bring a copy of that report. Uh, a log does have some kind of interesting information. Uh, but just from a historical perspective, it's always interesting to see the number of deaths in the county. Uh, going back to two thousand and eighteen, when we first started that relationship, uh, with Lenaway County and then eventually Jackson County, we had a hundred and eighteen deaths. In nineteen, we had a hundred and seven. In twenty twenty, so moved into the COVID year, a hundred and forty eight. Uh, in twenty twenty one, a hundred and thirty six. In twenty twenty two, again, a hundred and thirty six. And in twenty twenty three, a hundred and twenty nine. So, those numbers are pretty flat really for the last several years. So, again, there's kind of some interesting information. We will get that from members of the public. Uh, we will have that up on the public safety cap, uh, on the county's website, so that you can see that information as well. It is, it is kind of interesting to look at that, the different banners. And, uh, basically the medical examiner looks at any death that is not attended by a physician. So if they're not in the hospital, through the county medical care facility, uh, they got home, uh, accident out on the road someplace, those deaths are all reviewed by, by the county examiner. Uh, tomorrow, we're going to have a kind of interesting discussion, uh, as I've told you in the past. Uh, we sold our building, the company house at our district court. And I believe that I just shared with you last month that Lightways has approached us that they would either like to expand their current building, uh, or move to a much larger, they've got just under ten thousand square feet. They would like to have between twenty and twenty two thousand square feet for the program that, uh, they offer for community mental health within the county. Uh, we own the building they are currently in. And there is going to be some discussion tomorrow about the possibility at least of building a new building for them, basically adjacent to that where they are currently located, at Care Drive. And, uh, there's enough room up there to build a building of that size. And that vacating the building that is currently occupied by them, that that potentially would become the new home for our district court. Uh, we've looked at, at different ways that the courts interact together. And, uh, it really makes the most sense of anything, rather than moving district court to the historic courthouse along with the circuit court. Uh, keep probate court there, there's a, a lot of interaction between those two courts. And so consequently, it makes a lot more sense. And, uh, so we are going to have a court in a different location than the historic courthouse or in a singular courts building. Uh, it makes the most sense to have the district court. So, next month, they, I hope to have a report for you, and I'm sure you probably will hear something on the, the local news media as well. We also, tomorrow, will have our annual borrowing resolution, uh, to make up for the delinquent taxes. Uh, when the treasurer has returned taxes as delinquent, uh, back to the county treasurer. The county, then we borrow that money and make whole the school districts, make up for the ambulance going to the medical care facility, village, township taxes, any of them, we, we make the units whole. And then over the next three years, we collect that money along with whatever interest. And the difference between the money we collect and the interest that we, we take in on that, we use that to pay back the bonds that we borrow on that, so the end of the, the three years. And then if we haven't been able to, uh, collect those taxes, obviously they're foreclosed, those properties sold. The value of that, whatever those bad taxes, then pay back the balance on those bonds. And now, of course, because of court action, we no longer retain the difference between what that property, bad taxes and property, that actually gets back to whomever the property owner was at the time the taxes were, were foreclosed upon. We also, tomorrow, will approve language that will renew our operating mileage for our county medical care facility. Uh, that is currently at point six, six tenths of a mil, unless any applicable heavily rollbacks on that. That will reset it, if that is approved by the voters in August, uh, that will reset that back to the six tenths of a mil. And that completes my report. The only other thing I have for you is just to share, uh, my fire department, Woodbridge Township Fire Department. We have had a tradition of having a pancake breakfast on, uh, the Saturday of Memorial Weekend. Uh, it goes from seven thirty to ten. And, uh, we would be delighted if you would come down and, and join us for pancakes and sausage. And, uh, little, little good conversation, see our fire department. And, of course, we use that to pay for various equipment for the department throughout the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner. The commissioners have spent, and I'm not blaming you because things happen, but half again, probably closer to double on courthouse than what you originally intended to. You paid a part of that with ARPA funds, which I don't know what kind of strings that puts the county under. Uh, but that's what's been done and you spent. Or the target to spend about another half again of, of the ARPA funds on the courthouse alone. The eight hundred megahertz was shot down by the voters, if I'm not mistaken, and yet you're still talking about that. And the price tag on that is half, half again, fifty percent increase, um, is the numbers we're hearing.
Not half, but correct.
It's, it's considerably up though, Jim, very, thank you. Um, and now we're talking about the potential of building a court. Um, one of the commissioners proposed night court. And I do not, I have not seen the footage of that meeting, but I'm told that it went over like a lead balloon. There wasn't even any discussion on it, uh, is what I understood.
So, 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 so would you-
It's a awful lot of money.
A, a dresser at original, the, the courthouse project is still on budget from what we approved. We did approve some change orders on it, but we are still on track to ten point seven million dollars that we have appropriated for that property. So, yes, we received eight point eight million dollars in American Recovery Plan dollars. So, and we have, so your, your numbers would be not one and a half times, but, you know, a, a couple million dollars over above what we received from you. So, but the rest of the story is, is that the building would have in not too many more years begun to literally fall down. So, and the, just the demolition cost alone in that building are estimated to be in the neighborhood of five million dollars. We took a little tiny building down, just, you know, and, and, and it seems nuts, it really does. But we took a little tiny building down in Pittsburgh, uh, a couple of years ago, right behind DJ, so I think it was twenty feet wide and thirty something feet long, and it cost ninety seven thousand dollars because it has asbestos. And, you know, it's a courthouse, a hundred and twenty five year old building and a lot of material there. Very, and then you get in a whole historical preservation thing, which is a, a whole other thing. So, as far as, you know, it, it is just like when you roof and your car blows up and you need a car to. We have the same problem as far as there never is seemingly enough money. And so consequently, then we have to prioritize things. So, in regards to, you know, spending the money on the courthouse, well, it was money we probably never would have had. And I honestly don't know what the solution would have been without the money that we received. In fact, good, bad, or indifferent, good, bad, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. You know, we, we all see every day, if that's a printing four trillion dollar thing, go buy stuff. Um, you know, it's just caused incredible amounts of inflation. But those dollars were allocated for that. As far as the other projects, we're not talking about building a new courthouse building. We're talking about utilizing a building we already own. Yes, sir.
Can you mention something about expanding the Lightways building?
Correct.
Is, there is enough property there to do that?
Yeah.
I mean, and you have to take out that parking lot out, but that's the only way I can see where they could expand Lightways buildings, stake out that side parking lot.
There, there actually, there's an auxiliary parking lot for the DHS building. But yeah, so that parking lot space, there's a retention time. And I believe that, and again, I haven't seen drawings for placement, just from what our facilities director. But for the size, build, the footprint of the building, that we are told when we confirm with our building inspector, there's technical setbacks for property lines. So, I'm, I'm not contracting. You know, I, I, I fix appliances for a living, so that's my, you know, that's, but based on the information from, from the people that we have within county government, our facilities director and our bill, our, our building inspector, who, you know, I mean, they approved plans from like the wire store, so they-
So, would that displace like Michigan Works and those?
So, so Michigan Works is currently in the, the lower portion of that building. So, we would utilize the upper floor. So, the potential does exist that we might change, place it around. So, in other words, like Friend of the Court is across the driveway in the old health department building, right? You know, potential, because they're a court function, you know, down the road, we might look at possibly bringing Friend of the Court in the basement and moving Michigan Works over to the other building. So, but Michigan Works, again, they're a private nonprofit corporation that leases spaces from county government. They're not an active, so they, in time, you know, they could decide to not use or lease, just as, just as Lightways, you know, could choose to not to. Really, as any of our tenants that we have out there, the health department is tech, I mean, it's three kind of health department technically they're a tenant.
Right.
Then answer your question. Any other questions?
The, uh, the, the cost of the towers, I'm a little confused. I've been trying to read up different articles on it. What are you currently saying it'll cost to replace the towers?
Well, the entire system, I believe now what we're hearing is fourteen million plus.
Fourteen million?
Yes.
So I have a number here of eleven million.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
That's gone up again?
Yeah.
Now, in, in twenty twenty two, and this may be a faulty article I read, five million was the estimate in twenty twenty two when the battle proposed?
No, no, it was on whatever the, the number that you're mentioning, that eleven and change, that seems more in line. Because we had, we had almost ten million dollars just in tower equipment. And then another two million dollars in radios for our local first responders.
So, um, so we're at fourteen million. The voters rejected this in twenty twenty two, but you're coming back at them for more money two years later at a time when people are struggling and you're asking for more money. Uh, but the, how is it that the sheriff's department and the police department were able to get federal and state funds to improve, to, to take care of the issue? How is it that they were able to do it and the county can't?
So, the, the sheriff wrote an earmark for radios, okay? And so it was included in the federal budget, and they actually got two separate appropriations to buy radios with. So, we have, we have attempted to do that. We are attempting to do that again right now. We actually just wrote under the twenty twenty five budget, which will be adopted, not the paid up budget, they adopt continuing resolutions, right? But it, it would start on October the first. But we are working with Senator Peter's office with the hopes, he chairs the Homeland Security Committee. And there was a request that was sent out basically to every unit of government within the state of Michigan, that if you have a potential product to submit, to submit it to the Senator. And then Senator, Representative Wahlberg similarly sent out a release, so we-
Yeah, so you say that, that, that they got radios, what about the towers? But how, they don't need the towers?
Well, right now, we have one state tower in Hillsdale County on Sand Lake Road, okay? The problem is, is that it's like this road out here, that if you try, you know, the normal traffic that goes down it is not a problem. But if you suddenly had a large event and you have thousands of cars trying to go down that road, so the same problem exists. We have, because Michigan State Police, they are already using the Michigan Public Safety Radio System, all right? And so it is the state's tower out on Sand Lake Road, and that is what we are currently using. And then getting some, some, from Jackson County, from Lenaway County, we get, sometimes depending on where the units are at, we're able to hit those towers. So, but there is not enough capacity, there are not enough channels, and there is not enough coverage. The standard is, and we actually, we commissioned a study about four years ago, we actually hired an engineering firm that has no skin in the game. So, basically, we contracted with them to tell us, and so the standard is that ninety five times out of a hundred, when you have a radio mounted on your belt, because your body's in weigh the antenna, you have to pick up from the radio. So, ninety five times out of a hundred, when you key the microphone, that you are able to communicate with central dispatch or whomever you're trying. And in order to do that, we would need to have a grid of, I believe there's four towers that would be required to satisfy that, including the current state police tower.
Is, is the, is communication being answered right now? I, I mean, I haven't heard of any problems going on where people aren't, were not responding. Is, is your, what's the-
You know, I can tell you, so I'm a firefighter, okay?
Yeah.
And I also work transporting EMS, but in Jackson and Lenaway County, okay? Which they have eight hundred megahertz radios, Hillville does not. I was on a medical call down the state line on Robeson Road, so just south of Territorial Road last week, about two o'clock in the morning, all right? And central dispatch could not hear me communicating back from that location. And to, you know, so consequently, then their status check on you, because they're not able to hear you to verify that you are safe. And so they do that, they status check us. And so I ended up having to call central on my cell phone, which did work. So, does it all, this, you know, again, I drive a hundred and twenty miles every day for my clients' business. There's a lot of places in Hillsdale County where you have to drive five miles where you can get a cell phone signal. So, but, but regardless, that, you know, all you have to do, ask any of the guys from North Adams if the radios work. You know, ask, the reason why the sheriff came to myself as public safety chair three and a half years ago, what, with the idea, we need to do something about eight hundred megahertz radios. Because my guys, my, my deputies, they're having a problem communicating on the current VHF system as an officer, officer safety issue. So, yes, it's very, very real. The other, the other problem we have, you know, and again, the local fire department, Jackson County is what, five miles north of here? They regularly do mutual aid with fire departments from Jackson County. So, I'm on, my department is on the Ohio, Indiana line. It's not unusual for us to be on a fire scene with either Pioneer or Northwest Fire Department. Relatively common, especially if you're a grass person, you get a grass fire, we get a bunch of departments down there, southern. Because they are a completely different system, they are eight hundred megahertz, we can't talk to them. The same problem occurs with Waldron Fire Department. They actually have two sections that they cover in Lenaway County. If homeowner calls for the fire or they have a medical emergency, that goes to Lenaway County, which then they don't have the ability to tone out Waldron Fire Department because they are eight hundred megahertz system. So they actually have to call Hillsdale County Central Dispatch and then Hill, Hillsdale County. So that creates a delay. Those, public safety answering point usually, because we get times every time we run a call, there's usually from the time that the call initially comes in, by the time the call taker gets all the information and they actually dispatch it, there's usually about a minute and a half to a two minute lag. So if you think about that, you're doubling that lag at an absolute minimum when you have to go through, you know, start with one central dispatch, then trace the call, and then tone that out from another one.
The, uh, I guess, there's so many questions I have, I, I don't, I don't know. The, what about selling bonds to, to, to do this? Have you guys considered that?
Well, that's basically what we would be doing, okay? I mean, that basically is what we would be doing, we'd be working with bond consults. We would borrow the money and use the full faith and credit of the county of Hillsdale. But then the repayment for that, you know, you, you borrow money, you gotta pay back, doesn't matter what, what vehicle it is.
Now, what about doing special assessments to some of the larger, uh, uh, entities in the county? Uh, Hillsdale College, for instance, what about Martin Ray? Is there a way to do special assessments to Ray?
And that is, that's a great question. When we first were looking at this project a couple of years ago, that was one of the questions that I asked because Jefferson Township, they have a perp office, so everybody pays. Okay, with a special assessment, if you have a special assessment for a road, doesn't matter if you're tax exempt or not, everybody pays, all right? So that's the beauty of them. So when you have, you know, so Martin Ray is already paying, okay, as property expert. They're, they're, they're not a private, but the hospital, okay, they're private, non-profit, so they don't pay property taxes. Hillsdale College owns a great deal of property. I mean, they have the college, but then they have a hall shooting sports center. You know, they purchased the buildings for the Glaives property, not really the, the orchard, but the buildings. Um, you know, and that's, that's all tax exempt. They own a building in downtown Hillsdale, um, that is tax exempt. So, yeah, so yes, so the answer to your question is, we ask our attorney, because that's what they go to law school for, I did. So, and townships and villages and cities have the ability to do special assessments. They still have to be approved by the voters, okay? But then you say it's going to be seventy five dollars a year, but everybody pays, okay? And it's the same for everyone. Unfortunately, counties can't do that. We cannot do a special assessment. So cities can, villages can, townships can, but counties can't. So the answer to your question is, yes, we did look at it.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll stop.
Okay, any, if, 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 I, I, I will give you my card, give me a call, and I'll be happy. You know, I'll meet you for lunch, meet you, you know, for coffee, and I'll, I'll, I'll be more than happy.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Would it be wiser if Mr. Meekus went to a county commissioners meeting?
Delighted, delighted to have you there. Um, the only, the only downside to a county commissioners meeting-
They don't say anything, no, they won't answer any questions.
Well, and that's because, you know, and in public comment, just as it's here, you know, public comment is not, you know, it is you are commenting.
Right.
You know, and, and the trade off is, you get to say anything you want, you know, and, 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 you know, we as elected officials, you know, you can say whatever you want. And that, and, and that's what free speech is all about, right? So, but we, we don't get into dialogue.
Right.
Because that's not for public comments. But like you said, isn't it?
Thank you, Brad. Benze?
Thank you, I am going to run the ratings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
County Road Commissioner Mark Klein.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, sure.
What, uh, was your decision on the road projects?
Uh, we signed the contractors, so we're good with those. Uh, the only question-
Um, the only thing that we're really not doing is Peterson Road, we're doing the Culver.
Just the Culver?
And we are not going to do Bird Lake Road. We're going to do the camp.
Okay. Um, well, limestone fifteen hundred ton?
Yes. And two grand.
The only thing that we did not approve this year was Bird Lake Road itself. And Peterson Road, because Jefferson is not going to do it.
Right, right.
But then we didn't get them to agree to a call.
Yeah.
Uh, if you could have those contracts in before Thursday, we'd appreciate it, because that's our board meeting and we can approve, we can approve on that.
That's what I'm taking, I have a quirk, it's maybe not me, although.
Okay, you can, you can email him to the manager. Have you got his email?
Yeah, Chris, yeah, he's the one sending it.
All right. Uh, questions was asked about, uh, the seal code or chip seal on Kim and Dawn Drive. I had a meeting today with the manager and the superintendent, and we discussed, uh, the chip sealing that we did in Hillsdale County. We did thirty miles of road. Uh, Addison Road come out beautiful. Bun Road had some problems, um, well, Kim and Dawn Drive and Bacon Road. And the manager suggested that he makes an appointment with the representative from who we buy the motion from and have them come and do a check of it. And see if there could be something done that way. And, but whatever happens, uh, manager said that the county will back it up, that we will take care of it, even if it's on our dime. Because- Because, you know, frankly, we don't know what happened. The stones just didn't stick. Uh, we are making gravel at Shannon Pitts, Pittsburgh. Um, I don't know exactly how many tons they've gotten, but they've been there probably close to two to three weeks making gravel. They also made a pile of crushed stone so that we can use that for some bad spots. Um, instead of using the crushed limestone, crushed stone will be a little bit cheaper. Uh, they had them doing projects that was left over from last year, they went on Sterling Road in Litchfield Township. And they're gonna be working on Gilbert Road down in, uh, Reading Township. And we're gonna try to get those finished up so that we can go to work on the rest of the roads. Barring that we don't have any major flooding or anything. Uh, other than that, it's going along good. There'll probably be scraping roads probably next week, not for the motor graders, it'll just be trucks to smooth them up. But when we get ready for the brine, that's when the motor graders will come through and do the good job of grading. And then when we put the brine down, that'll help hold it. Uh, they're doing some tree work, uh, on Bird Lake Road on the south end of it, down by Beecher. Because Jefferson contracted to have that done. Other than that, that's about all I've got to report. Anybody have any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
What is the normal procedure as far as sweeping these roads after they lay the tar and the stones down? How many times are they supposed to go through?
Well, that is a good question. I don't have an answer for.
I can tell you, on Dawn Drive, that sweeper went through four or five times.
So was he bringing them from the shoulder back into the road or...
If you look at my lawn, I think he swept them all off. I think he loosened a lot of it up where the tar was. Where they put the tar down and then put the stones down. I think somebody needs a real education. I think county workers have them off.
Uh, as far as the seal coating, it, uh, is supposed to, the first coat is supposed to adhere to the stones. And then the fog seal going over is what actually seals it.
They were taking all of that off. The sweeper going through was actually dispersing the stones.
This was done right after the seal coating or weeks later?
This was done right after the seal coating and stones were done, before the emulsion was put down. He went, they went through four or five times, you know?
They didn't have a good time for it to take a hold.
They, they went over the roller.
No, this was a sweeper. They went, the day that they put the stones down, they had rollers up there.
Yeah.
After that, it was a big sweeping unit.
I'll bring that up at the board meeting up there.
Because they went through four or five times. They'd be sweeping all the stones off the road because, you know, when you go down Kim and Dawn Drive, I mean, it's down to the tar. They swept it all away. It was, somebody doesn't know what they're doing.
Well, what, what, what is hap, what has us perplexed is the fact that Addison Road come out so good.
I don't know, but they, they didn't go down with that sweeper as many times. I saw the sweeper there and then across, was the road right across from the railing pods? I saw when they, when they would do the sweep.
Oh, in the subdivision.
In the subdivision, yeah. So you might wanna check that road too because they were all in that same... Hey, but four or five times to go through with those sweepers? Sounds that way.
I will bring that up at the board meeting. Anybody else have any comments?
I have a comment. I may have said this to you before, but I think it bears repeating. I had occasion to go to Somerset and I think they had just graded the road. I didn't see tire tracks, but I, I wanna tell you it was a beautiful job. It was, it was very, very nice.
Thank you. They are trying very hard on the roads when they do the grading now. The problem we're having is trying to get the burners down. And, uh, we're gonna try to concentrate on that. We did have, uh, last year, I think we had two extra grader training sessions. And we'll probably have some more this year too. Because Bob Riffus is a big, uh, proponent of training. Says you can help train and we can get it. And actually, it isn't, it isn't really a cost to the road commission because a lot of the vendors will come in and do training. And it was, for the motor graders, it was AIS equipment out of Lansing who the road commission bought the graders from that provided the training. And there's, they also have, uh, it's a portable trainer for excavator operators. And it's, it has a, a seat and controls for an excavator, but it's a screen. They, they don't have to bring the whole excavator. And so that they can put people that have never drove an excavator, operated an excavator in there, give them a few hours on this thing so that they more or less got an idea of what you're doing. And then you can eventually put them into a, a true unit and have them operate. I even took a crack at it and luckily I didn't hit the truck when I was... I, I'm not looking for a job as an excavator operator, but anybody else got any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Yep.
We're gonna move on to public comment. Remember, keep your comments to the board, do not comment to each other. Keep your comments respectful. No arguing in three minutes. Who's gonna be first?
Mr. Meekus.
The, I got a, a, a letter that was sent, uh, to Stephanie Scott from our attorney. The FOIA charges were set at twenty dollars an hour. Um, he, he says in the letter that that's the lowest, um, hourly wage paid to, lowest paid employee capable of filling your request, FOIA request. Uh, he doesn't say how the twenty dollars was figured out. To my knowledge, there is nobody on, on the board that is paid by the hour. So how did the twenty dollars an hour get figured out? Where did that number come from? I don't understand where it came from. There's no discussion in here about that. Uh, and nobody's paid by the hour that I know of, so where did that number come from? The only way that I know you could come up with an hourly figure is to take the person, which would be Suzie, and divide the number of hours she works in a year into her total salary for the year and come up with an hourly rate. I don't know if that was done, um, but I have a feeling it would be twenty dollars an hour. So I'm just curious, how did that number come up? Seems arbitrary. You wanna answer that?
Not really.
No?
This is your time to ask one.
Well, I know, but I have...
Big comments.
It, it seems like it's an arbitrary number. No explanation. And it's supposed to be the lowest paid person by the hour.
I have a comment from the realists. I'm a little confused about the meeting that was held on March twenty-fifth. When you started that meeting, it was stated it was a preliminary budget worksheet. It was advertised as a budget hearing and a truth and taxation hearing. But to my recollection, unless I'm mistaken, there wasn't any mention of truth and taxation. There was no paper presented nor a vote on it. So I'm, I'm a little confused about what the meeting actually was.
I see. Anybody else? Mr. French.
So am I still on the tax board review or not?
Um, I'm not sure. I will have to look. Is you... Break it, man. Sorry. Question? I gotta stop. Mr. Klein.
I guess I just have a comment on the board review. Seeing as how I was on board review, it was a joint with Jefferson and, uh, Weyland Township. And while I was there, since we didn't have too many people there, I think we had maybe seventeen total from all three townships. We just, I discussed with the two other supervisors, Jefferson's was the first day, Weyland's was the second, why we have a joint board review. That's a cost measure. They said that by going together to the three townships, they can have the supervisor, or the assessor right there, which anytime you want, you have a board review, you want your assessor right there because if there's any mistakes made, he's the one that's gonna answer for them. And so that's the comment I have on board review. Oh, one other thing, there was, we only need three people on the board review. So there was one from Adams, one from Jefferson, one from Weyland. Now that means other people from the other townships can be alternates. Because one day there was, uh, a guy from Weyland Township that couldn't come. And so their alternate filled in the next day.
And, and that's something that I don't like because this is our township. We should have the three people here and if that assessor doesn't want to come when it's time for us to have it, then I think we should get a new assessor. So I, I, I don't think our people should have to go to Jefferson for the board review. That's my...
Anybody else? Hearing done. Move on. Old business. Bits for the mowing and snow renewal contract. Those bits were supposed to be done in by March twenty-ninth. We only have one. TKC Lawn and Snow and Wood LLC. North Lawn Cemetery bid was fourteen thousand eight twenty for the year. The township building area was twenty-seven hundred dollars for the year. Um, snow plowing was one hundred and twenty dollars per plow. Also clearing of sidewalks, the doors. Comes with references. We have one bid. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept TKC Lawn and Snow to do the snow and lawns for the township, North Lawn Cemetery and Township Hall.
One motion. I'll second.
One thing I wanna point out on this, um, there was confusion at the meeting where all of a sudden it came up there were bids. I checked the bid file, I checked the contract file, I checked, checked the cemetery file. Then was told there was a five-thousand bid limit. I went back through all the minutes. That happened in July of twenty-twenty-one. The document that's in there is a, is a copy, has copy written on it. I have absolutely no idea where the original is. They just wanted to let you all know that. Then we have, because they've been here a lot, I have people come in on the cemetery. They are super happy with these people. They even talk about how there's no, uh, grass clippings on graves and, you know, on the side of the stones and stuff. So I think they've done a real good job for us.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. I'm in favor.
That's all. Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, Greg. Oh, and I... All right, spring cleanup. We had, we had talked about doing a spring cleanup. I took it up with the village. We wanted to join in with the village and use their facility in order to put the dumpsters down there. Since the village does a spring cleanup anyways. Talked to Mr. Beech, he was gonna get with the powers that be, his words, not mine. And he was gonna get back to me, apparently the village isn't gonna do one this year. So they're gonna wait till next year. I would like to figure out somehow. I, this is still an option for us. If we can find a facility, place that we can put the dumpsters, it's not gonna make a great big huge mess. And we can get the people to, to work it. And to, uh, you know, tractors available to help loading and stuff. I still would like to see a township-wide spring cleanup. We are at this point looking for a place to book. We may get with the village and see if we can still utilize maybe their, uh, their place out by the sewer plant. I will talk to him. In the meantime, we'll be open for suggestions as to where to put it. Okay, so if you guys have a place that you think might fit where it's not gonna make a great big mess, we'd be open for that, okay? But it is not a gone, you know, we are still looking into it. We still wanna get something done. Okay? That is true. For information, um, it takes care of the old business, turns the new business. Um, we need to amend the county early voting agreement. And Suzie's gonna tell you why.
Um, Somerset, after trying to have the nine days early voting, have decided that they'll go in with the county because of the expense. So the county commissioners, um, have agreed to this. So what we have is we have an amendment to the county agreement that includes all municipalities, townships, cities now in this. So that's basically all it is. Somerset does wanna come in, so it'll be now all.
But it has to be voted on by each township.
Yes. Yes.
So, um, in order for it to happen, we have to approve this.
Right.
So at this point, I will accept the motion to approve.
All motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, you seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery mowing for Kirby and Hill Cemeteries. We received a, a letter from Greg Bolenbaum. Consider the following bid of thirty-seven hundred dollars for the care and maintenance of Kirby and Hill Cemeteries. Should you need any further information, sincerely Greg Bolenbaum. This falls under the five thousand dollars that we are required to put out for bids. So, and Greg Bolenbaum's been doing these for years, so we're gonna go ahead and keep Greg doing it. Kirby and Hill Cemeteries. And I'll need a motion amendment.
All motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Done. Um, at this time, we, when, when we talk to, uh, Jefferson on their roads, uh, they're using, they have a, uh, a marijuana dispensary in Jefferson. uh, they're using, they have a marijuana dispensary in Jefferson. It's on M ninety-nine thirty-four, right there, it used to be the old Sidekick Cafe. They used what the state gave them for having that dispensary to do their roads. It's two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying that, you know, we should jump right in and stick fifty dispensaries in here, but we did have some people that called us up and approached us on, um, putting a marijuana growing operation in Adams Township. Two college kids from Northwestern University. Those, um, facilities are governed by the state. They have to have security in place. Those revenues, we're not exactly sure because we don't know how much they would be doing as far as, uh, how much they would grow and how much they would sell. What we're doing is we're kicking it around and we're gonna ask the public, people of the township, what they think. People, I know some people are not for it, some people might be for it. Before we go ahead and either approve or not approve, or re, uh, remove or revoke the current moratorium on the marijuana, we're gonna know all the options to it. But this is right now, putting it out there for people to think about. Because if it's something that we can gain a revenue from the state of Michigan to use for our roads, and earmark it strictly for roads, we might be able to get all our roads done. And get them done at the expense of that industry.
How much did reading get?
I don't know, they were all a million dollars. Um, and that's money from the state. And I'm not saying I agree a hundred percent with it, but it's an option. I mean, it is legal in the state of Michigan. It's, and it's, we don't gain any revenues from the state liquor commission for booze from the corner store. Or booze from the gas station down here. We can get revenue off of this. But which costs? At what, what costs? And that's, those are the options that we will be looking at. But the thought of getting our roads done and having the state pay for it. That's an idea. Okay?
These kids have got a plan too, don't they?
Yeah, they have a plan to, uh, they, they are... They're, these, these people that are talking about it, they are, they have a business plan. This is a business for them. It's not just Johnny and Bill going out throwing a bunch of seeds in the ground and selling weed. It's not that thing, they're looking at it as a full-time big business.
Is there a reason they're not looking at a township where it's allowed?
I don't know, they, they approached us.
They called, they called and I did not have an answer for them.
And I did not either, and that's...
So I said that, um, they called me on the cell phone and I said, you know, I don't have answers to that, but I'll get with the township supervisor. And he can take you from there, because I don't know if we have a plan that, you know, we don't...
Right, we have a moratorium in.
Yeah.
Avoid it. Uh, when I talk to them, they, they would appreciate any information I give. So...
But yeah, they said they had a plan.
We'll see what happens. We just, it's not something we're gonna do away with one thing to approve another, we're just gonna put the feelings out there. What intrigued me was the fact that Jefferson is paying, doing their roads on their money. Yeah. See, and that's what I'm saying, you know, if it's something that they're gonna give the money to people for having it in here, if it's done legally and it's done right, it's done carefully, and it's something the state is regulating, we don't have to regulate it. Maybe it's something we should look into. And that's all I'm saying, is looking at it, not saying we're not doing it. We're just looking at it.
They sell it directly to the state.
Right.
You know, they had, you know, that's what they... But what's to see their plan? They said they could do this.
Yes, we'll, we'll know more of it, but it was just something we wanted to put out so that people could think about it. Um, moving on. Appointment of the planning commission. So at this point... Here it is. Okay. So the terms for the planning commission were up. So we're gonna put some people on the planning commission so that we can get the planning commission up and running. We have names and we have tentative, uh, terms. And when the terms will be ending, we have three different ending dates on the terms. We would like to get, uh, these people in as quickly as can. Jason, we'd like to keep you on as the township representative for the board. Yeah, hers would end here. Right. And then, uh, your term would be, uh, till eleven twenty-twenty-four. Uh, if you win the election, that could be extended from there.
Right.
Um, the first terms though, we will be ending the, uh, we... Um, the people that we put out there. Daryl Williams. For twelve thirty-one twenty-four would be the ending date of his term. If he so desires to continue, we'll extend his from there. Gail Clannahan, uh, her term would end twelve thirty-one twenty-five. And then, uh, we would extend from there. Jennifer Puckett, term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Her term then could be extended from there. John Beaver, term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six. At that point, if he desires to remain, his term will be extended from there. And then Roslyn. Yes. Your term would end twelve thirty-one twenty-six. And if you desire to go on from there, we would extend your term. Okay, those are the ones that we are appointing at this time. Um, we will be taking a roll call vote on the board. Well, we, we should have seven, we're short one. No, um, actually, we were told, and I've, I've got it correct. We were told, um, five to seven. Okay, so we will be doing a roll call vote. At this time.
Jason?
Um, yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Suzie, yes.
Okay. So if you folks... I thought he was gonna be here by now.
Yeah.
So we would need to, um, have you sworn into the office. Okay, so when you can be, make yourself available to Suzie to get sworn in. If you'd like to do it tonight, can you do it tonight? Are you available at all? That would take care of our thing, okay? All right. Moving on. Treasures notes. Do you have anything, Susan?
Yes, you got it.
All right. Entertain a motion to accept the...
As presented?
As presented.
All motion.
Motion made, seconded.
I'll second.
Motion made, you seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bills. Okay, bills are in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred sixteen dollars ninety-four cents. Entertain a motion to pay the bills.
All motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Pay the bills in the amount of twenty-five thousand four sixteen ninety-four, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Cemetery. Cemetery bills in the amount of seven hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of seven hundred eighty-four dollars seventy-nine cents. Motion made.
I second.
And seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Those are paid. Moving on. Clerk notes.
Um, on the clerk notes, basically, I just wanted to comment again that this early voting is the way to go. Um, I thought you had a tentative bill, the bill for the election, and one says about fourteen, gonna be right around fourteen hundred. So, that is really... That is a good deal, he's doing a lot more, he's doing training. We are meeting, we're trying, we're gonna do something different. On the eleventh, we're gonna have a clerk's meeting and we're gonna meet with the canvassers. And we're just gonna have a general discussion. If they see things that, you know, if they want... When you're working the poll, they like a lot of comments. You know, someone came in with four kids, is a first-time voter, things like that. And so they're just gonna go over some things with us, which I think is a really good idea. I think he is very innovative and he's definitely into the training. We'll have several people that'll need to go for training because they have terms too. Your training lasts for two years, so we have some people that are gonna renew. We'll also have training on the new, um, nine days early. Because those will be coming up, I think October.
Okay, uh, as far as for me, the board review, I know that, um, some people don't like the thought of the joint board review. Personally, and, and I will say this, um, I prefer Adams Township to deal with Adams Township. I like Adams Township people to make decisions about Adams Township people. Now, having said that, I was told if we want the board review to happen here, in our building, we can have that. It would still be a joint board review. But it would happen in our township in our building. Gives us that option. That means our supervisor's here, our secretary's here, and our board review member is here. In our building. And our people can come to where they're familiar to deal with their board review problems. For that, I'm not so sure. We have, I think we have enough people that if we set our own board review, we'd be okay. In the past, that's not been the case. We've had to struggle to get people to get on a board review. This was an option. So, you know, I get, you know, and what you want, what you're saying about not having someone else decide, and that's my biggest thing, is having someone from a different township decide the problems for Adams Township. I don't care.
We have the entire Adams Township board review here right now? All three of us?
Yes.
Yeah? So we have the board review.
And I did talk to our township assessor, our tax assessor. He said that if we wanted to do it here, we could do it here.
But you still wanna do it in July?
Not necessarily, we can, he works for us. It's not the other way around.
Isn't it cheaper though to, to do a joint?
I don't know.
Sometimes cost effectiveness doesn't speak quite equally either.
I don't understand why they don't rotate it.
Well, they did, they, they rotate, uh, it can be here the next time, the next board review would be here. But having said that, we would still have the representative Jefferson and Whedon here as well as us. I'm so sure I agree with that. But that's something for the next board review and we will get into some deep discussions before the next board review. As far as the rest, uh, I appreciate your input on the roads, really I do. I did get a call from a few people out at Lake Valer about Kim Drive, Don Drive. I've also had a couple of calls about some of the dirt roads. I really appreciate the input. And if I'm not able to see it, at least I know about it and I can notify the powers that be. I am still, like I said before, we are still looking at the spring cleanup thing. And we really have a few people out here that would benefit from a spring cleanup. Please don't give up on that, we will have more information that hopefully in May is still a location that we can stay. Okay, as far as, uh, any of the others, uh, a lot of construction going on in Adams Township. A lot of new places going on. Very happy to... Okay, that's my report. We're gonna go back to a public count. Remember, three minutes, be respectful, comments to the board only, do not argue or comment to each other, and be respectful. Okay? Mr. French.
As a citizen of the township, I can see the benefit of having a marijuana dispensary as far as tax purposes go. But as a substance abuse treatment provider, I am vehemently opposed to the idea of a dispensary in this township. Because marijuana is linked to schizophrenia, is linked to other mental disorders. I've worked in the field for twenty-three years and I'll, to be honest with you, I would hate to see this happen to our township. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next. Way in the bag.
Yeah, um, I have to comment on that because as a parent and as an educator, pastor educator, I, I just am so against this marijuana. Um, it's a drug. And it's an easy way to get kids hooked into it and, and it gets them used. And all I've heard is it's money in the pocket for us. I'd rather drive on a hot-ridden road than have marijuana out.
Anybody else? Yes?
Erin, can you tell us what it cost Adams Township for the primary election?
Um, that, that's gonna be about fourteen hundred and then we had extra people this time.
And it's more than fourteen hundred, do you have all of the ballots, the book printed and everything?
No, we don't, that was with everything, because on the primary is different. Primary is different from a normal election because it's two parties, there's no proposals, there's none of that. So the bill was about fourteen hundred for that. In addition to that would be our inspectors. And like I said, we did have more, because we had four that did half-days and everybody got lots of training. But yeah. I'm going to say that probably with everything, it was... Let's see. I'm gonna say it was, it's probably gonna be about twenty-one, twenty-two. Because, yeah.
And, may I make it known, normally we would not count that.
I know.
But I get, I understand. It was the question for her, and I did. Yes, ma'am, I know. Um, anybody else? Mr. Herman.
I'm interested, please to ask about that more. I'm interested, please, to ask about that mari- marijuana, is that, at the moment, in the township, the mar- the moratorium existing?
Yes.
Was that achieved by? The board deciding, or by township people voting on it, I haven't got a clue, I'm asking.
Before my time, I don't know, did you?
The board decided.
The board?
At the time, at the time that it came up, we had to decide before that law went into effect, whether we would participate in the, in these, uh, um.
Dispensaries.
Non-medical dispensaries, and we made a decision at that time not to participate. In fact, in fact, I wouldn't wonder, at this point, and I, I mean, if you guys keep on this program here, I'm gonna investigate it. I'm not sure you can just revoke it, but maybe you can. Cause it was a, it was a pretty, pretty definitive way that you had to, uh, stay out of being, uh, a dispensary, uh, township. But, if you wanna go down this road again, you know, marijuana is, is, has been turned into something, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, the point is it's existed, moratorium is existed. So, I'm fascinated to hear, how did, does this subject come up again? From the board? Did somebody approach from outside the board, and want to make propaganda to get a dispensary here?
We don't know that.
From the public? Yeah, how did it come to the board, and, and that's interesting. Or did you think?
No, I need to answer questions.
Yes, I'm gonna answer. Um, and I apologize, Mr. Meade. The reason it came up again was because we have two people that approached township, interested in growing marijuana in the township. At a, yeah, I do not have a disclosed, uh, location yet. They wanted to know if we were open and welcoming to it, told them we do have a moratorium. And that's how it got revisited.
So, would you, with the board, expect somehow, on this matter, information from the public?
Yeah, that's why I brought it up. I'm not, I, I am not doing anything that, that.
Like public comment like now?
The majority of the people in this township. The majority of the people of this township, if they don't want anybody messing with them, okay? It's put to the people who live here, but it was a question that was brought up, and I figured, rather than, we would bring it up.
No, I'm just very interested in how it works, because I could imagine, that's what I can hear from a few people, that the moratorium would be against it. That's my feeling.
That's why we brought it up. No, it's not, it, it, it's not something that would, that would go for a vote on a ballot. Um, it would be something that would, um, actually be talked about amongst the public and in. We could have a public meeting onto it, and listen to the pros and cons. It would be up to the, just like any other thing, the people of the township have a voice, and, and we would expect that they would use it and tell us what they want us to do.
Randy, I, I think it could go to a vote. I never get to talk marijuana, that don't bother me none. But I do know the marijuana free and the oil for it helps to protect, and. I think it could be put up. For a town, for township. So, you know.
Well, before the board would even vote on anything like that, or we, we would actually find, we would make sure all our, our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. You know, uh, we would make sure that everything was taken care of before we even talked about, but that is why it would be brought to an open discussion. To make sure that it was something that, that we aren't doing behind anybody's side.
But I always decided, you know, it's, I try to keep, do what I'm supposed to do. If something passes by one vote. One way or another, I'll support that, but I don't. To me, a, a lot of this seems like, uh, it can be shoved out. There were somebody don't want it, they can get together and vote it out. Or the, the whole township hasn't had the right to speak their term, and the folks, where they would vote before they would come and debate it.
Well, this would never go onto a ballot, as far as that goes, it wasn't put onto a ballot for the mor- moratorium, it was done by the township board. The township board decided that they didn't wanna have anything in town, and that's how it, it, it got, it wasn't from regulations or some state thing saying either you have to have it done by this time. Uh, it was done, and, on a vote by the township board. To put the moratorium.
We didn't have to have an ordinance in place.
We did have to before the dispensary law, the law came in, but the board is the one that decided that. Right. Gail?
I don't, I don't like to speak against my, my friends, and he would know more than what I do about the school. But I'm gonna take about, I know marijuana saves my mo- my ninety-four-year-old mother's life. I also know many people, my sister-in-law goes to the hospital, she won't let, she wouldn't let him work on her, uh, therapy until she had her motion. So, this is not, I mean, I, I don't know what this would be, but I just say marijuana is not like we think it was when we were young.
Yeah, it's not necessarily, cause smoke can get in mine.
No.
There are a lot of creams, a lot of oceans, a lot of cures that people use it for, a lot of different things, it is a, a pain, a, and, and.
You know that for a.
Leaving that to be said, that's what the discussion would, that's why we would have a discussion before anything is done.
I wanna see the plan.
I do, I wanna know what he's gonna do.
I, 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 I.
You don't have to.
My hope about that is that, I hope they grow it, sell it to the state, and just know.
I think there's a, there's a misunderstanding here between recreational marijuana and med- medical marijuana.
That's what I guess.
So, what we're talking about here is the recreational marijuana. Which is, which is.
We're not talking about, we're talking that these guys are wanting to come in to grow it in our township.
Yeah, for recreational.
Oh, you don't know that?
No.
So, what you're saying, you mean, you think they might do it for medical purposes?
I grew up when they sell it to the state.
To the state, and the state would do what they will with it after that.
Yeah.
They, they, they grow it and then sell it to some place.
Yeah.
It's not like they're opening it up where you go in and buy a bag.
Yeah.
You just go in, and they're gonna grow it, they'll, they'll sell it, and it would be distributed to somebody other than the public.
So, you're not talking about dispensaries?
No.
You're talking about growing facility?
Yes.
That's how what they called it, it's, um, that's what we asked for.
That's what they're wanting.
And please don't take it, it stinks. And please don't take it stinks, if they knew it right, it's not gonna.
Stink?
Stink.
That's the least of the problem, it stinks.
I, I would, I would, I would also like to, to point out though, any of you people who grew up in North Adams, remember the oil well.
Yeah, that's right.
You think something stinks, remember the oil. All right.
Going to, going to the, uh, western side of North Adams.
Remember growing in there.
Hey, yeah.
Uh, and also remember, the state of Michigan allows the individuals to grow twelve plants on their property.
As long as they have a medical care, isn't that correct?
That's what?
As long as they have a medical care?
Yeah. It's under recreation. Anybody can do that, but it cannot be readily acceptable to the public.
Just a little comment about the smell, if you ever go on the inner of the road on the other side of, um, Myers there in Jackson, and you had the geese. There's a, there's a choice, uh, growing operation, it's well back off the road, probably quarter mile and it stinks.
It stinks?
Absolutely, that full river.
The guy next door.
But see, we don't know anything about where they wanted to put the facility, it was just, uh, putting out feelers to see if the township would welcome. And that's, that's all, and that's.
My, my suggestion would be, well, there's, there's.
Okay, any?
Public comment yet?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, one more time on the March twenty-fifth meeting, could you tell me why you departed from your, um, public's comment policy? And only had one comment period at the end?
Um. Honestly, there was only what, you and, and the board?
But the policy is two times. So, we didn't have an opportunity to comment on anything before you discuss things.
I don't know that that's a policy. I think that's just something that we allow.
I think it's policy.
I don't, I don't know where that would be. We didn't know, we did not put it into policy. So, anyways, any more, Mr. Herman?
Another question, well, certainly the new amended county which you approved. The, uh, the amended county, old, early voting, voting. Who proposed an amendment to an existing rule? Did that come from the county to the township?
It came from, Somerset went to the county, because they were the only township not in this. And they, I figured out that it was not a good idea, so that's why they came in. That's why it's in.
And both Adams, Adams Township now decided.
We just had to. Vote that we, it's okay for them to come in, not everybody's.
Yeah, everybody's already in it, they were the only ones in the town.
It wasn't anything that affects us.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and that's one more question, another subject, just for information, the, uh, the, uh, uh, planning commission. Existing at the moment, how many people are on there, you said?
The planning commission?
Yeah.
We have six.
And you said you, you need to look for more, or?
We would like to have one more, make it to seven.
And for how long?
But it's not, it's not mandatory, it is what we would call, it has to be where it can be, a tie can be broken.
There was one more, Josh Logan was on there.
Yeah. But, yeah, we, we just wanna make sure when we go in, that it's beneficial to them. Okay, any more public comment?
Do I have another? I have a, I'm gonna borrow her.
You can borrow anyone.
I can.
Would you speak for me?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak for her. I just, it's a very simple thing.
Yeah, what?
Was the, I didn't, I missed the budget meeting. So, was there something approved as far as the, the millage renewal, or what?
Yes.
You guys voted on approving the millage for the township? And it's, and how much is it?
Same as the one was.
Okay.
Eight, seven, four, five, I believe?
Okay. And you voted on that, at a special meeting, or when was that approved?
When was the meeting approved?
When was the millage approved, or?
The twenty-fifth, it's part, part of the budget.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't approved on the twenty-fifth? Oh, okay.
And the meeting was closed.
I wasn't there, right? Thank you.
And publicize.
Anybody else?
What are your methods of posting and publicizing for special meetings?
Special meetings go, um, the three doors. Um, the publicize goes in the paper, the budget meeting was in over thirty days before the actual meeting. The bid we had to publicize, which is really expensive for no reason, it's a hundred and ten bucks.
So, it's an, it's a bill that'll.
Yeah, you have to be, it has to be your publication, otherwise you have to go to five places. We really don't have five places, you have three here, you, you might have to an office if they'd let you, um. The stores aren't gonna let you put it up. Uh, maybe, um, I mean, the library maybe, but, you know, how often are they open? So, it's usually better to put it in the paper, because it's on the page where all the other legal government things are.
I don't get paid.
Timeline.
Timeline. Mr. Klein?
Back to border review.
You're in.
The board can do whatever it wants as far as border review, they wanna do a joint one, they wanna do a separate one, that's fine. But one thing people need to get, the idea is that you just don't go into border review and get your assessment lowered, or your, your taxes lowered. I'm not going to jail for anybody, I can tell you that right now. But. Now I lost my train of thought. Anyways. The, the joint border review really is a bad thing, cause we didn't treat anybody any different, whether they was from Adams, Wheaton, or, uh, Jefferson. They, we're all treated the same, we're all trained the same, the assessors right there, the cost savings, I can see it. But if the board wants to bring the border review back to here, that's your represent, you can do, you can do that. But the idea that if, that we're gonna treat people from Adams Township special, no.
No.
That's not gonna happen.
No. And that, that was never intended to be a suggestion for that either, it's just that some folks, some folks.
I didn't understand.
Like, like to have people who live here that they know and they trust, make decisions on their taxes and stuff, because they know the people.
Being on border review for many years, there's people that want you to bend over backwards and, or their assessment, or their taxes. And if I do that, I gotta blow my mind, everybody else.
Right. Yeah, and I do that, I just brought it up, because it's something that, that, you know, actually is something for me. All right, any other public comment? During the, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All motion. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or rejected?